Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the City of Warrenville City Council Regular Meeting for Monday, January 20, 2025. This meeting will be conducted in the traditional in-person format here at City Hall. For convenience, the public may view the meeting virtually on the official YouTube channel for the city, and you can get that address at our website. Public comment will only be available in person as always, and the viewing is just to give you information. So may I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Ashower?
Here.
Alderman Augustinovich?
Here.
Alderman Berry?
Here.
Alderman Davalos?
Here.
Alderman Kruckenberg?
Here.
Alderman Lockett?
Here.
Alderman Widener?
Here.
And Alderman Wilkie?
Here.
Thank you, Julie. Welcome, everyone. Please stand as you are able and join me for the pledge.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is the part of every meeting that we set aside for citizens' comments. We have one person signed up this evening, Mr. Bob Seibert.
Bob Seibert, Albright Court. Last Monday night, you had a community economic development meeting. Item three, the board received backup material on TIF III and TIF IV. There are some red flags on this material. On TIF IV, 2023, the city's figure on EAV was 17,688,000. The revenue was stated as $11,971,000. This is impossible, impossible because the tax rate with these numbers, which are the city's numbers, would have to be .679. If that tax rate occurred, all of you would be hanging outside on the trees. The tax rate for that year was .077003, one ninth of what would have been needed. Then it went to the next year, 2024. EAV, city's numbers, 42,382,000. The revenue went down to $3,186,000. In TIF, this doesn't occur because it's a closed system that is building year to year. You wouldn't see this, another red flag. So I took the actual tax rates for 2023 and 2024 and multiplied times the city's EAV, not my figures, for 2023, which was 11,900,000 with the actual tax rates that are determined outside the TIF and then applied to the TIF, not determined for any information from inside the TIF. That figure became 1,362,000, 1,362,000, down from 11,900,000. So this also shows a problem. I went to 2024, and the 42 million shows with the 17 million, two and a half times increase, that a $3,186,000 figure is probably in the realm. When I did the calculation, came up with $3,237,000. TIF III stated 2023, 12,272,439,000 revenue. 2024, 16,632,000. When I took the rate, the tax rate was .076380. Multiplied that, the 439,000 using your figures came up to $945,000. Using for 2024, the $632,000 figure came up to $1,265,000, twice the previous revenue figures that were sent to you folks. I can only stand behind the tax rates because I took these from the county's figures. The EAV are your figures, but when we multiply those, we come up with the figures that I just gave you. So I think that there are some red flags here, and I think it's important, if you understand TIF, you can look at these figures. Just by looking at the figures, you can tell something is not correct.
Thank you, Bob. Anyone else wish to speak who didn't know they had to sign up? Okay. We'll move on then to official and staff comments, beginning with me. I just would remind everyone that we celebrate the life of a great man today, Martin Luther King. There were many celebrations in the area that were very well attended, and I'd remind you all that he advocated for some very strong and very good principles, and I hope we can remember that and try to incorporate those into our lives. That's my statement. Clerk? Treasurer? Okay. Alderman? Alderman Davalos?
Yes. I'm not sure this is the time or budget meeting is the time, but Mr. Seibert, the question that you asked, I just, there's a really simple answer that actually I very recently found out that I had forgotten about. And I wondered if maybe Director Dahlstrom could answer that probably quite quickly, why that extra 10 million is on that, is on this year's or last year's revenue for the, for TIF IV. I, I'm not, I hope that's okay, Kevin.
Sure. The slide that had the 10, for TIF number four, that had, hold on, I'm trying to get to the slide. Hold on just a second. Showed a total revenue figure for fiscal 2023 of 11,971,948. That was the total revenue audited for that fund for the year, and it included approximately $10.6 million in the bond proceeds from the bonds that we issued in April of 2023. So if you took that, that out of there, it leaves at about 1.3 million or whatever it is. So that's the difference. That's why that number for total TIF revenue 2023 looks so big.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Thank you. City Administrator and City Attorney? Very good. Thank you. We'll move on to the approval of the agenda for this evening. Alderman Widener, would you like to make that motion?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the agenda for the January 20, 2025 City Council Regular Meeting.
Second? Second by Alderman Kruckenberg. Any changes or comments on the agenda? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries, and the agenda is approved as presented. We have several sets of minutes that need approval also. Before we move on, Alderman Widener, could I ask you again for that motion?
Yes, thank you. I move to approve the minutes of the January 6, 2025 City Council Regular Meeting, to approve the minutes of the January 6, 2025 City Council Closed Session Meeting, and to approve the minutes of the January 13, 2025 Community Development Committee Meeting.
Second? Again, second by Alderman Kruckenberg. Questions, comments? Again, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion carries, and the minutes are approved as presented. The consent agenda for this evening, item 6A, Accept Plan Commission Recommendation, waive second reading, pass ordinance 02025-01, approving site-specific amendments, a final planned unit development plan, and a special use permit for a planned unit development for a mini warehouse development at 4200 Cantera Drive. B, Accept Plan Commission Recommendation, waive second reading, and pass ordinance 02025-02, approving a temporary use permit for the Warrenville Library District's 2025 and 2026 Concert on the Commons Concert Series. C, Accept Plan Commission Recommendation, waive second reading, and pass ordinance 02025-03, recommending the Warrenville zoning ordinance regarding previous, amending, I'm sorry, recommending, amending the Warrenville zoning ordinance regarding previous improvement covenant agreements and lot coverage in residential districts. D, Accept Community Development Committee Recommendation and Past Resolution R2025-01, appropriating motor fuel tax funds for the resurfacing of Batavia Road. E, Accept Community Development Committee Recommendation and Past Resolution R2025-02, appropriating rebuild Illinois bond funds for the Mack Road Bridge replacement, roadway reconstruction, and multi-use path construction. F, Accept Community Development Committee Recommendation and Past Resolution R2025-03, appropriating rebuild Illinois bond funds for roadway resurfacing associated with the 2025 road program. G, Accept Staff Recommendation and Past Resolution R2025-04, endorsing the Legislative Action Program of the DuPage Mayors and Managers' Conference for the 2025 Legislative Session. H, Accept Community Development Committee Recommendation and Approve a Revised 2025 City Council and Committee of the Whole Meeting Schedule. I, Receive and File Minutes of the Bicycleist and Pedestrian Advisory Commission Meeting held on December 10, 2024. J, Receive and File Draft Minutes of the Plan Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals Meeting held on December 19, 2024, and January 9, 2025. K, Receive and File Reports of Invoices Paid Up to January 15, 2025, in the amount of $186,572.40. L, Authorize Expenditures for Invoices Due On or Before February 3, 2025, in the amount of $295,495.33. M, Receive and File Report of the Chase Commercial Card Expenditures for the Month of December 2024, in the amount of $24,767.94. And N, Receive and File Wire Transfers Report for December 2024. Alderman Widener?
Motion to approve the agenda as presented by Mayor David Brummel.
Second. Motion and second. May I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Lockett?
Aye.
Alderman Wilkie?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Ashower?
Aye.
Alderman Kruckenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
And Alderman Augustinovich?
Aye.
Motion carries, and the consent agenda is approved this evening. We'll move on to the regular agenda. Just a quick announcement before we get into those items. There are two items on the regular agenda, and they pertain to the same property. I've asked Community Development, Community and Economic Development Director Amy Emery to provide some opening remarks about the process to this point and recommendations before the City Council. The petitioner is here this evening and would also like to address the City Council before we begin our deliberations and direct action in these matters. So if I could have a motion for the first one, we, no, we don't, okay, well-
Oh, unless you want to call it, you want to make the motion now and then deliberate.
Yeah. Let's get the motion on the table. Could I have someone make that motion for item 7A? Alderman Lockett?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the Plan Commission Recommendation, waive second reading, and pass ordinance 02025-04, approving a final plat of consolidation for 28 West 846 Butterfield Road.
Second.
Okay. All right. Now we'll have a little discussion of what's happening. We've got one motion on the table. Amy, would you like to lead off, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the time to provide some information, as you stated, about the process, the recommendations, and the decision that is before the City Council this evening. The site is directly across from Batavia Road, from the Warrenville Horizon Apartments, and it sits on the land between the post office and Butterfield. The property, the property that we're looking at today has been zoned B4 Motor Services District for more than 50 years. Today, the areas in Warrenville that are zoned B4 are concentrated along Route 59. The Route 59 corridor is home to many automobile-oriented uses, including fueling stations and drive-through uses, and even more are planned in the future. Route 59 is directly connected to I-88, and it's the most heavily trafficked corridor in the city of Warrenville, and it has the capacity to accommodate additional auto-oriented uses in the future. As noted in the staff report included in the backup agenda materials, decades ago, the property that we're looking at today was home to a Sinclair gas station. That station closed, and a bank was on the property for some time afterward. The buildings of that era have long been demolished, and the site has been vacant for more than 25 years. It is worth noting that there have been concepts and ideas and proposals that have been presented to the city for development of that area, including multi-unit commercial buildings in 2006 and a townhome development in 2017. And of course, as additional requests come in, we would forward those to the property owner for their consideration. The discussion about this new application that's on your agenda for review and action this evening started at a pre-application meeting with city staff. At that time, a country store was proposed with a coffee shop, and during the discussion, the drive-through component and the gas station pumps rolled into the conversation. At that point in time, the Warrenville by design overlay was under development, and staff explained that while the coffee shop and the convenience store were consistent with the overlay zoning district that was under review, the drive-through and the gas station uses were not included in the overlay. After that meeting, that pre-application meeting with staff, the Warrenville by design overlay process continued, and that process in total lasted more than a year. It included many opportunities to collect public and property owner feedback. The overlay is consistent with prior plans for that area, but it offers us more details in terms of architectural recommendations, updated bulk standards, and updated use standards, all of which align with the longstanding vision for that area. The petitioner provided testimony during the Plan Commission public hearing to request that the property be excluded from the overlay due to the conflict between the proposal and the overlay as it relates to the drive-through uses and the gas station. The Plan Commission did not recommend removal. All of the surrounding properties now are within the overlay and subject to those requirements. In a typical zoning application process, a commercial development like this would move from that pre-application conversation with staff to a courtesy review before the Plan Commission. And while it's not mandatory, a courtesy review is strongly recommended as a process step to provide early feedback and direction. That step did not occur with this application. Instead, the petitioner submitted a formal application days before the Warrenville by design overlay was approved. I need to be clear in stating that the application that we're reviewing is not being reviewed solely through the lens of the Warrenville by design overlay, but the adopted plans that were in place at the time the application was received. So the critical thing to understand here and that is while the overlay prohibits drive-through and gas station uses, before the overlay was approved in August, these uses could be permitted after careful review through a public hearing process as special uses. Given the timing of this application, we have to take that, that approach, and we evaluate this request to see if it meets the criteria for approving a special use permit. So prior to August, the city's land use plan for this area was the Old Town Civic Center Subarea Plan adopted in 2007, and it identified the subject property as part of the civic center, which supports retail and residential uses to support the vision for a civic center and a transition to those outlying residential neighborhoods, and of course, the natural areas beyond. A gas station and auto-oriented uses are not recommended by that 2007 plan. Through two public hearings held before the Plan Commission in August and December, all of the public testimony has been opposed to the project. Concerns included compatibility with the adopted plan, the 2007 plan, impact on surrounding land uses in the civic center from a noise, lighting, traffic, and use compatibility perspective, the potential for environmental impact, truck turning movements on the property and accessing the site from Batavia Road, the market need and impact on existing businesses for such uses, and just the overall intensity of uses on a compact parcel. Between the first public hearing and the second public hearing, the petitioner revised the plans and completed studies as requested by the Plan Commission. These actions resulted in a revised layout to accommodate emergency vehicles without having to wait for customers to finish their fueling operations, updates to the landscape plan to eliminate several landscaping variances, and updates to the elevations to include a hip roof on the canopy to match the proposed building. The modifications and are all improvements to the original site design. The landscaping exceeds the codes in some ways, and the proposed building architecture is very attractive, and it offers details and features far beyond any other gas station that we have here in Warrenville today. The Plan Commission, considering the hearing information, provided its recommendation based on written findings of fact. There are positive improvements and attributes with the request, but there are still significant concerns based on the evaluation criteria. From a traffic perspective, the city remains concerned that the stacking space location for the drive-through has the potential to create traffic issues on Batavia. There's also concerns about truck delivery, including fuel deliveries, while traveling on Batavia Road. From an environmental perspective, gas stations are one of the most intensive uses in the B4 district, based on their hours of operation, the site activity, and the potential for environmental risk associated with the fueling and spillage. This proximity, this property has proximity to the river and forest preserve, carefully protected and considered. The primary issue, though, is the impact on neighborhood character. This concern came up during much of the testimony and both hearings before the Plan Commission. The character and the vision for this area is as a civic center, and the community has invested in that vision. It's more than words on a plan that have been sitting on a shelf. In your agenda backup materials, the December 19 staff report details the actions that have been taken in context and light of this plans on pages three through six. It includes private investment like Stafford Place, the Warrenville Horizon Senior Living, Evila Eve, and Recycled Cycling. Public investment has included signage, the Prairie Path Trailhead, Batavia Road streetscape improvements, and art installations. And the widening of Batavia Road, I'm sorry, Butterfield Road, rather, was done respectfully to the plan vision with a focus on bicycle path development and safety for pedestrians to support that civic center vision. The city's investment in the preparation of the Warrenville by design overlay is also another example of its commitment to the vision. Also, the events and activities that we have in this area hosted by the city, the Park District, the library, and others to bring festivals and life to the area supports that civic center vision. The area today is unique and distinct as you travel along Route 59. The orientation and the layout of the buildings and the uses and amenities, they stand out. You know you've arrived somewhere. It is a growing, it has a, I'm sorry, it has a growing sense of place and identity. The mix of uses proposed on the subject property, no matter how well landscaped or designed, are very intensive. The gas station and drive-through would distract from the vision and impact the vitality of the area in the long term as a civic center. The proposal is very different from the current pattern of development. It caters to passing motorists along Route 56 to maintain its customer base, not the residence of the community. The proposed development would create an activity node that does not complement the existing character of development, infrastructure for development, and vision of the civic center. The B4 zoning district designates both the drive-through and the gas station as special uses. These uses are not permitted by right, and they are not permitted by right for a reason. Additional consideration has to be given to their proper location to complement community goals and character and ensure they do not have a detrimental impact. Finally, as was noted during the public hearings and in the staff report, Warrenville is well-served today with conveniently located gas stations and drive-through uses. Currently, there are six gas stations within the city. Five of these are within 1.2 miles of the subject property, and another is only 1.7 miles away. Thank you.
Okay. The staff recommendation for both of the motions, please?
Yes, thank you. With the first item for your consideration this evening, the plat of consolidation, the Plan Commission recommends approval, and this request is in compliance with the city code, and it will facilitate future development of the site in alignment with our plans and zoning regulations. However, based on findings of fact, the Plan Commission- However, based on findings of fact, the Plan Commission recommendation is for denial of the special use permits for the drive-through and the gas station uses. The agenda action request of the city council tonight on that second item is to accept the Plan Commission recommendation and direct the city attorney to prepare an ordinance denying the special use permits for the gas station and drive-through. If so directed, this ordinance will be presented at the February 3 meeting for your consideration.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Okay, petitioner, if you'd like to speak?
Thank you.
Sure.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Make sure you're in the microphone, please. Thank you very much. My name's Jim Wagner. I'm an attorney at the Law Office of Helman Wagner in Naperville, and I represent the developer of this property, which, as you heard, is located on the northwest corner of Batavia Road and Butterfield Roads. I want to thank you for the opportunity to present here tonight. Also present with me tonight are the development team. We've got the property owner Deborah Saron, her longtime representative J.R. Walker, the developer Danny Ahmad, the architect Eric Erickson, and the developer's traffic consultant from KLOA Javier Milan. Let me see. I want to show you tonight a couple of renderings and drawings of the site as proposed. If I can operate this. Dan Property is proposing to develop the Warrenville Country Store along Butterfield Road south of the post office property. This is a highly unique product that includes a convenience store with a coffee and donut shop, supported by five double-sided fueling positions. To be sure, this is by no means a run-of-the-mill fueling station in many ways, and will truly be a one-of-a-kind location. The developer has met with city staff and has agreed to multiple design elements to create a unique and visually pleasing site. In working with the staff, the initial plans, as you heard, had been altered to accommodate some of these suggestions. I'm trying to put the site plan up here for you to see. Over a period of months, the developers made several updates to the initial application materials in an effort to respond to comments by staff, the Plan Commissioners, and the public. The most significant of those changes include a reduction in the number of fueling positions, a reconfiguration of the customer parking while maintaining the 14 spaces that are required, and ensuring safe and efficient routes for fueling truck access and emergency vehicles. We've increased the landscape area within the parking lot and significantly increased the number of plantings throughout the site. We've added bike racks and benches in two onsite locations. We've added a gravel path to the bike racks and the benches from the adjacent sidewalk, and we've also added some wayfinding signs onsite to improve internal circulation. In addition to those site changes, the developer obtained a traffic study to address some of the concerns that were raised. This study is in the application materials, and it confirmed that there is no significant addition to traffic on the adjacent roadways as a result of this development. Further confirms that there's minimal pedestrian presence during the peak hour periods for this use. And the report also makes clear that the 10 drive-through stacking spaces that are provided will accommodate the anticipated demand, and that stacking is in full compliance with the city's code. The developer has also obtained a photometric study and had that completed, which confirms compliance with all city lighting regulations, and it shows that there will be no negative lighting impact on adjacent properties. That, too, was obtained to address some concerns that were raised by the public and staff. And at great additional cost, the developer has also agreed let me get this lined up, to develop a really beautiful building here at this location that is very unique, and I think would be a real boon to the community. They've committed to invest heavily in the project to create this unique building and canopy design. While, as you heard, the Warrenville by Design overlay district regulations do not apply to this project, the developer has reviewed the design elements set forth in the city's design plan and incorporated many of the design elements into the plan to reflect the character of the city's future vision for buildings in this area. As to landscaping, which was also an issue that was raised, as many of you know and as you can see from the slide, there's a great amount of green space in this area, and the developer has agreed to provide extensive landscaping as part of the project. This is being done in response to staff concerns regarding the intensity of the use. First, it should be noted that the site is surrounded by significant green space. There's a stormwater detention basin facility to the north, vacant land to the west, and an incredibly deep setback along Butterfield Road on the south. It's important to note that the distance between the Butterfield Road edge of pavement and the proposed paved area on this development site is nearly 100 feet. That's primarily green space with numerous proposed plantings. This huge setback buffer of green area sets the building and the canopy far back away from any adjacent uses. The site also has significant onsite landscaping that will further minimize any perceived impacts on adjacent properties. In order to proceed with this development, as you heard, the city's zoning code requires a special use permit for the fueling station use and the drive-through facility. I'd like to take a little time to discuss the requested special use permits and what that means. Initially, it is very important to note that the development property is zoned B4 Motorist Service District by the city. This zoning, as stated in the code, is designed to allow commercial properties to develop along major roadways to take advantage of existing high-traffic counts. While this property was recently made part of the Warrenville by Design overlay district, the application predates the overlay district, so the proposal must be reviewed based upon the underlying B4 zoning classification only. This means that any restrictions on the proposed uses set forth in the Warrenville by Design overlay district do not apply to this application and must be disregarded by the council. For purposes of this project, the B4 Motor Service District allows development of gas stations and drive-throughs with a special use permit. By providing this zoning classification at this location, the city has already determined that properties zoned B4, like this property, are suitable for these uses, but some special considerations must be evaluated to determine whether the special use permit will be provided. The city's prior inclusion of gas station and drive-through as special uses within the B4 Motor Service District within the city's zoning code is a prior finding by the city that these are in harmony with the general zoning plan and will not adversely affect the neighborhood. This is of critical importance because the property's zoning district controls the legal uses of the property. The city's comprehensive plan does the allowed uses on the property. The zoning ordinance is the law in the city, and the comprehensive plan is not. The comprehensive plan is just an expression of the city's goals in an area, but importantly, the comprehensive plan does not have the force of law. In addition, the city's comprehensive plan and subarea plans were prepared in 2007, and much has changed in Warrenville and along the Butterfield Road corridor over the 17 years since. Importantly, there was a significant road widening and intersection improvement adjacent to the development property, which not only widened the roadways, but reduced the size of this property by nearly 20%. That land acquisition for public use left the remaining property at a very small size of about eight tenths of an acre. The hardship that was caused by IDOT's acquisition was not the fault of the owner, but it did limit the development prospects for this site. Luckily, we have a developer here who is willing to take on this project and who has designed a development that works on a site of this size and will enhance this community. In reviewing an application for a special use permit, the city's zoning ordinance lists certain criteria for evaluation. These include traffic, environmental nuisance, neighborhood character, public services, and public health and safety. In reviewing these criteria, the city may impose conditions on a development based upon the characteristics set forth in the zoning code. Our development team strongly believes that the development design and proposed use meet each and every special use criteria set forth in the zoning ordinance. The city staff agrees that the proposed use does not create increased or atypical traffic volumes on the adjacent roads or any environmental nuisance. They also agree that the proposed use does not cause a disproportionate demand on public facilities, and it does not create a public health or safety risk. Staff and Plan Commissioners did raise concerns that the development does not comply with the subarea comprehensive plan. While the staff has concerns with the development's compliance with the subarea comprehensive plan, we believe that the unique design characteristics and the extraordinary level of green space and landscaping proposed overcome any perceived non-compliance or impact on this neighborhood. This property's zoned B4 Motor Service District, which contemplates exactly this sort of use and takes advantage of the high-traffic corner location, this use will be a benefit to the neighborhood properties and could spur further development along the north side of Butterfield Road. We'd ask that the city council take action to approve this plan and the associated special use permits. And we're happy to take the city council's comments and questions regarding the project, but before proceeding with that, I'd like to give other members of the team just a brief opportunity to speak as well. Property owner Deb Saron has a few words, I believe.
My name is Deborah Saron, 26957 North Highland Terrace, Mundeline, Illinois. I have owned the subject property for approximately 25 years and have diligently tried to find a commercial use for the property for the same 25 years. I have been rejected for almost every possible retail use because the demographics in Warrenville and the location do not support the business investment. The property has been zoned B4 Motorist Service District and still is, according to Warrenville's 2024 zoning map. Per Warrenville's definition, the purpose of this zoning designation is to provide along arterial streets for heavier forms of retail and wholesale uses serving more than one neighborhood that require highway locations and that may be incompatible with retail uses permitted in other business districts. This proposed development fits perfectly within this definition and zoning code and is also the highest and best use for the site to succeed financially. In 2014, the state of Illinois took 20% of the property for the purpose of widening the highly-traveled Illinois Route 56 Butterfield Road corridor. As a result of IDOT's taking, it left an irregularly shaped parcel that's less than one acre, which created an undue burden on the property and diminished our ability to attract a developer willing to invest millions of dollars to build a product that would yield a reasonable rate of return on a small site that fronts on a busy state highway and backs up to the unsightly loading docks in rear of the post office. Not only is this development the highest and best use for the property, these developers were willing to modify their entire plan for the retail building and site plan at great expense to themselves in order to conform to staff-required recommendations and to provide the look and design that Warrenville says is so important. They have thoughtfully provided a pedestrian-friendly environment that also exceeds the landscaping codes of the city. They'll be investing millions of dollars because they want to be a part of this community and offer goods and services to not only Warrenville residents but also neighboring communities. It's a beautifully designed retail store that will provide a variety of everyday necessities. It will be a benefit to the thousands of people who visit and enjoy many activities at Blackwell Forest Preserve because of the proximity to Blackwell. The store will offer products and services that align with the many activities visitors enjoy. The development will contribute at least 15 times the tax revenue Warrenville currently collects on this site, which can be utilized for many community needs. It will bring life to an unproductive area that has sat vacant for the last 30 years. And yes, in addition to the retail store and coffee shop, there's going to be a fueling station, but one that offers a higher-end station such as Shell, which holds its owners to a much higher standard of operation and will attract higher-end automobiles and customers who don't frequent budget stations that sell inferior fuel products. Every city has multiple fuel stations, and many are either at the gateway to their cities or located in the downtown core area. For example, Hinsdale has two stations across the street from each other as you enter their town on Ogden Avenue and York Street, and also have a fueling station in their downtown core across from their train station. Many other communities have fueling stations in their downtown business districts like Naperville, Winfield, Wheaton, Glen Ellen, Highland Park, and Lake Forest, just to name a few. They have not negatively impacted surrounding retail development, and they are thriving along with the other retail businesses. In the past, both the Plan Commission and the city council have approved and granted special use permits with zoning variations for fueling facilities to multiple sites that have the same B4 zoning as this property. Special use permit number 944 approved a service station and convenience store. Special use permit number 1019 allowed Mobile Oil to operate gasoline sales and a car wash. Special use permit number 3038 was granted for a BP station, Dunkin' Donuts, and a drive-through. Special use permit number 2125 was granted for a service station, food store, and a car wash. All these properties have the exact same zoning designation as the subject property. With all due respect and having met all applicable zoning codes for a special use permit, we're requesting the same consideration and approval granted to all the other B4 sites. My request is fair, reasonable, and just, and should be approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else we should speak?
Good evening, council members. My name is Jeff Walker. I'm a commercial real estate broker and developer with my corp- I'm a commercial real estate broker and developer with my corporate offices located at seventeen seventy-six South Naperville Road in Wheaton. I've been in business for forty-four years, developing a multitude of office, retail, and industrial properties in DuPage County. My firm was integral in the development of the Danata Farms property at Butterfield and Naperville Roads. My development group has been instrumental in the development and construction of multiple projects in Warrenville, including a retail center at the southwest corner of Route fifty-nine and Batavia Road, medical office building on Route fifty-nine, the forty-two hundred Cantera Office condominium project, and the development of your U.S. Post Office across the street. We were the original developers that had bought that property and facilitated the post office being there along with home sites to the west of Rockwell Street. That was in nineteen eighty-nine when we started the project. That was thirty-five years ago, when we made the purchase of that property. In nineteen ninety-eight, my family made a further investment in Warrenville by buying the corner here at Batavia and Butterfield Roads. We have been trying to develop this property for thirty-five years. We have brought multiple opportunities to the city to develop different things on these properties and have been denied and sent away by, at the time, the staff and the plan commissions at that time. We've been trying to develop the corner parcel for twenty-five years in a very positive and way that would benefit the community here. We've paid hundreds of thousands of dollars in real estate taxes and have sat on this vacant property for all this time seeking an answer to that development question for the property. In all that time and utilizing all of my past experience and knowledge in commercial development, we've been unable to find a development that would work on the property or one that the city would embrace and have us go on. We've tried to bring retail centers to that property, been denied because the city had different visions for what they wanted to see there, yet they offered honestly very little help in helping us try to build something that was commercially and reasonably and financially productive there. Market forces and demographics, we can't change. We've tried to work with those for all of this time period. It's the reality of any development project. You have to have customers that will come. This is a very challenging location. The development that we have right now is very unique in its development look and style, and it has potentially the most realistic use that could financially succeed on this property. I mean, the city's looking at, or tells us, let's do retail on this site. People don't want to live on a busy thoroughfare like Butterfield Road. It just isn't reasonable. The Civic Core Project that you passed in two thousand and seven was a wonderful vision and a very pretty picture, but not one thing got developed under that program. Not one thing on any of this property. The things that you talk about that are the core uses here right now are the city hall, the library. The couple of businesses that you suggest have been here for several years and could go in any retail location. Yes, I'm biased. Yeah, I'm angry, to be honest. I was thirty-eight years old when I started this trip. I'm seventy-three right now, and I'm still trying to find an answer to this. And something that I would expect you people to be fair and reasonable about. As Deborah had indicated, there are fueling stations and convenience stores in many communities surrounding Warrenville that are very successful and do not have a negative impact on it and do not have a negative impact on the neighborhood. And they provide sales tax revenue that is a benefit to the community. They provide services that is a benefit to the community. You know, with all that being said, I don't know what else to say except that we will do what we need to do to try to get this approved. We think it's a positive thing, and we would hope that you would reconsider and give us the opportunity to show you how we can succeed and provide something good for Warrenville. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Any questions from the council for the petition? Alderman Widener?
Yes, I'd like to know how much fuel will be stored underground, the total number of gallons? What other kinds of fuel will be offered for sale in the gas station? And what kind of protective measures are employed for those underground storage tanks? What their material is made out of and how often, what the frequency is of those underground storage tanks leaking?
Well, thank you guys for your time. My name is Danny Ahmad. And to your question, twenty thousand gallons, and that's pretty regular for majority of gas stations. Well, twenty twenty-five fire mar- martial regulations, they protect the underground area. I know there's some concerns of leakage or environmental impact, but today, the regulations that are in place are actually very strict, and Illinois is actually one of the toughest regulations for underground storage tanks. So there's double-walled everything underneath the tanks, the lining. So, and frequency, I would say about every three to four days, you would get a load of fuel.
Are you aware that the city of Warrenville has gone through two episodes of underground tank leakages and has worked with the state of Illinois in order to remedy those sites that the owner of the property no longer took responsibility for and was unable to be located when it was time to clean up those sites? That the state of Illinois, the same group that took twenty percent of the property, came in and provided a solution to those underground leaking tanks for our benefit because the owner was no longer around?
Alderman, we are aware of those situations, and that's exactly what we want to prevent here. And I think what we're talking about-
Mr. Walker, please closer to the mic.
I think what we're talking about there are a couple of stations that had been in place for many, many decades, and this would be a station that has developed to the current standards, which are far superior than what those standards were.
Exactly. So every, every three to five years, the regulations do change. The stations that you're mentioning, I don't know exactly when they were built. Usually, the older tanks, the regulations weren't in place, the ones that are in place today. And the tanks and underground piping that's going in today is far more superior than that station that leaked. That was probably, you know, built a long time ago. And we do annual testing, quarterly testing, and keep up with it. But today, all the regulations are pretty, pretty strong.
And I believe those owners of those properties would have told us the exact same thing when they came to Warrenville and established their gas stations with their storage tanks, that those storage tanks were in the same condition and were foolproof, just like the ones that you're guaranteeing us today. I have another question about exhaust and fumes. Do you have any kind of studies or anything like that that talk about the air quality around gas stations and the amount of fumes that are generated nearby as a result of exhausts and tanker trucks coming in with twenty thousand gallons of fuel? And the other things that, that happen on site with motorized vehicles?
So with, with, again, state, Illinois state fire marshal regulations, all the fuel that is being dumped into the tank has vapor recovery. So the vapor goes back into the tank that's carrying the fuel. So there is regulations for all the vapor. As for exhaust, I mean, that's everywhere you would go. It's the same with car exhaust.
Right, but there'll be an increase in car exhaust at that location as we add fourteen parking stalls and ten gas station units. Those cars will be idling and emitting gas exhaust to an area that has never experienced that environmental hazard in the past.
It's very similar to any commercial property that has traffic coming in. It would be pretty much the same, even if you built something else over here, a restaurant or anything, it would have the same impact.
Are you aware that airborne chemicals can be released to, from one hundred and fifty feet to three hundred feet in the surrounding atmosphere at gas stations?
I'm not, I'm not aware of that.
And that some of that exhaust contains benzene, a highly toxic chemical? Those are some of the, some of the things that you're exposing to the neighborhoods. And I just wonder why you would not consider the residents and the community who have offered zero support for this project, and neither has any of the strategic plans that, that Warrenville has embarked on. The community and the neighbors have been very clear that this is not a fit into our area. Regardless of the additional work that you've done, which is appreciated, the landscaping and so forth, and the changes to the architectural building, it just does not seem to fit. It is going to have impacts. It may not raise the, the number of vehicles that are visiting that site. I don't know how that could not be possible, but the vehicles that do come there will be stationary, and they will be emitting toxic fumes into a residential area that, and a sensitive environment, too.
And Alderman, we appreciate your comments and concerns, but this is a relatively small use, a relatively small building with a relatively small number of pumps, far smaller than the Thornton's gas station that was approved here in Warrenville just a couple of years ago.
Right.
And to your point, I obviously care about the surrounding neighborhood as well. But here, we're also trying to build something beautiful as well. We also want a spot where the community comes together. We have done it before in other stations as well. It's the center ground of the community where people all around the community come in, get a cup of coffee, get their gas, et cetera. And also, for all the people that are passing by Warrenville, the traffic that's, that's coming. Anyone going west of Butterfield, Warrenville is not taking advantage of any of the traffic that's coming down that road. There's, there's, there's nothing on this road that you guys can collect tax from. And also with the forest preserve that's nearby, all the, all the people that are camping, biking, recreational use, we actually provide a service. We provide restrooms. We provide emergency supplies, you know. And, and this station would be different, and I think a lot of the people don't understand the vision. It's not going to be just any gas station. I think when you think of gas stations, you think of the old mom-and-pop rundown station. It's, it's more of a country store that provides a lot more than just fuel.
We had a gas station several years ago that promised us a chef that would come in and make breakfast at the corner of Winfield Road and Warrenville Road. And that lasted about three years, and now it's, you know, they pass packages of donuts and things that are in single-use plastics over the counter to people. So that, that promise of being so unique and having someone prepare a special breakfast for you and things like that ended, you know, very quickly as soon as they realized they could have a higher profit margin by doing something more instantaneous. And the, the forest preserve offers washrooms, gathering spots, concession stands, all the things that you think, you know, you're going to offer is going to duplicate what they already have inside, inside their facility over there. So I don't see the benefit. And as far as a community gathering place, I think the times of gas stations being community ga- gathering places has, has gone, gone into the distant past. We have a new gathering place called the Trailhead that's right at the connection to many of our trail systems in town that Warrenville purposely designed and put in there just for the same, same purpose. So as far as providing a community gathering place, it, it isn't anything that the, the city wants or the community wants or the residents have spoken in favor of. So, thank you.
Alderman, just briefly, I, I know you're, you're indicating that there were promises made in a prior proposal, and I think that raises a good point. That is a large part of what the special use permit process is, is that you folks are welcome to approve this and attach conditions to it. To, to the extent the developer is making proposals that you like and want to see stay, those can be conditions that you make the special use approval, or you can bind in the special use approval. Thank you.
I get that. I think also there was another gas station that I'm aware of at the corner, the northeast corner of Route fifty-six and Route fifty-three that was denied because of environmental concerns, and that property has now become part of the park district, a much better use, and doesn't have the environmental threats close to a park facility that was, you know, previously proposed in the past. And that use was denied, and it was upheld. So, thank you.
Alderman Berry?
Thank you. I guess I need my memory refreshed. The, what is the Illinois Department of, or IDOT suggested for the in-and-out on both Butterfield Road and on Batavia Road?
The plan that we've provided would just be right in, right out on both sides. So no left, no left turn movements.
So at that point, you're really limiting yourself to only people who are driving eastbound on Batavia Road and who are only driving westbound on Butterfield?
We would be glad to have full access at each location. However, the reality is that only right in, right out would be allowed. That is another constraint on this site that makes it difficult to develop, but these developers, you know, are willing to take that on.
Yeah, that's, I guess, what I don't understand because you really, you don't have access to the whole street, really. What's, at, at that point, retail, what's the point? I was in retail for thirty years. I would never go to, into a location where I couldn't get my customers to, to come into me. I mean, that's kind of crazy.
And, and, and before doing this project, we obviously studied the market and the traffic study. We have already had Parent Petroleum, that is actually a company out of, right here, Warrenville, has actually been very interested in this site, and they actually did a traffic study. And with their, with their conclusion, they would actually, they, they showed very good numbers and potential for this site. So the traffic that's already coming down Butterfield, that alone is just enough for this site to be very successful.
Okay, I guess I just, I don't-
Yeah, no, I get it. And I, my, me and my family have been in this business for a while, so we have, we have a lot of experience. So we have a lot of confidence in this, in this location.
Thank you.
Alderman Lockett?
Yeah, just a comment. Understanding it's B four, it's before Warrenville by design, two thousand and seven plan. I think the biggest challenge is the residents. It's not even in my ward, but the amount of chatter, right? If you want, hit a hot button here in Warrenville, you just say gas station, right? If you go back, you look on social media, and you go back years as far as you can. It's just what the residents do not want, and they are adamant about it, so it's not you. It has nothing to do with you guys or any of that. It's just, we obviously work for the residents. And of everybody that I've spoken to over the past month, two, three months, and you can weigh the sales tax, the gas tax, you can try to sell them on whatever you'd want. They said anything but a gas station. So if you were just bringing the country store, you know what I mean, I think that would be a hit. It's, as you've probably already heard multiple times through the plan commission process, it's the gas, gas tanks and the pumps that doesn't work.
And again, I, I was hoping to do a good, good enough job where, once it is built, people recognize it slowly and start to change. Because, I mean, people have opinions about things, and then opinions change all the time once it's actually built. A lot of times with their idea uncertainties that they have, they might have negative impact on their decision. But I, I felt that way, that once it's built and people are used to it, they would come to love it. And again, it is, it is a busy road. It's a commercial zone, right? So people, obviously in the neighborhood, who live very close to it, they do live close to a highway, like mini-highway, which has a lot of traffic. And regarding, I know before there were some concerns of noise. This is a very busy road, as it is, you know.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Alderman Davalos? Okay. Alderman Davalos?
Thank you, Mayor. I am one of the Aldermans in Ward Three where this is located. So I was very interested in this, attended the public hearings, and had the privilege to see how well our Plan Commission asked questions and examines things, and was very impressed that you were responsive to a lot of the requests. And it certainly looks better now than your first plan. I think that building, that retail building, the little cafe, is, is very nice. And I, I did listen to the residents in the area, and, and I understood, there was a variety of reasons. It wasn't just one or two things, but a variety of reasons. The, the pollution and that stuff has been talked about as important. It's not just the residents in that location that we're not, we're not positive about this idea. As a city, for a long time, we have been trying to create a city center. If you notice, we don't have a typical city center, but because we have had the privileges of having TIF dollars and different things we could do, our whole city center has been revitalized and is attractive, and we've been able to modernize and, you know, police and Park District and library and everything are wonderful. And so, but it extends farther along than that. So that's why the gas stations on the outside rim have been approved. And we don't have anything against the gas stations, because we, we need them. It's a location of this one. And, and I probably would not have voted in favor of it even before Warrenville design for some of those bigger reasons. And we've put a lot of money and consulting with, with professional consultants and county people, Park District, Forest Preserve consultants to try to create this sort of city center that's walkable. We can have our events and all kind of things there, but not necessarily these motor uses in that location. And it's a challenging piece of property because it's going to be right in, right out for everybody. And so it's going to be a challenge. And I know you've, from listening to all of this and listening at the Plan Commission, you guys have worked hard over the years to try to do this. Nevertheless, I am very positive on what we're trying to, what we've been trying to create for 25 or so years. And I want to see it happen. We will never have a downtown that looks like other people's city center, but it can be interesting and creative and different. But I just don't think a gas station will work in that plan. So I, again, appreciate the work you've put in, but I, I think a lot of us just have this vision for what we want this downtown area to look like. So, thank you.
Totally respect that vision. And what I would like to say is, the market is what talks, right? So, I mean, the vision is great. I mean, I've seen other towns that have blossomed, and developers have to come here and spend money, and it has to make sense. I, I have a lot of visions, too, for a lot of towns. I can make a vision right now of this entire town right now, but it's very easy to put on paper when, when you have to put the money up, you have to see the market talks. The market says, "This, this property's been making for 25 years." You know, I mean, if it's that important, I mean, I, you guys should buy it, you know, and the city should buy it. But it's been sitting for 25 years not doing anything. And if, if we don't build this site, I, I don't think it's gonna, nothing's gonna be built there. Because it, as, as a developer, let's forget the gas station, even, I'm thinking of other things to bring to this corner, I, it just, it's not feasibly possible, you know? So that's, that's where I'm coming from.
Thank you. It, it is challenging.
It's very challenging.
But we've done some amazingly challenging things that we never thought we could do. So, again, I, I, yeah, so, so I can't really support it, even though you have done a nice job, and that, that building is very attractive.
Thank you.
I, I just think the whole idea of the gas station won't work on that lot. So, anyway, thank you for all the work you've done.
Yeah, no worries.
I have another question, please. May I?
You would ask me?
Sure, may I?
Sure.
Thank you.
I understand that you have a vision for that side of the road. I'd like to know, when you hired Warrenville by design to create these buildings that you all want to see there, did they do an economic feasibility study? Where are you going to get a developer when it doesn't make economic sense? It would cost millions of dollars to put up one of those town buildings. It's beautiful. I would love to see that there. I would love a developer to come to me and say, "Look at this building I want to put here for Warrenville." It doesn't make sense. They have to get tenants in the bottom. They have to have residents who will pay rent. It doesn't, it, there's no rate of return on it. So has Warrenville, have you reached out? What have you done to help us do something to achieve your dream and vision there?
Are you asking me?
I'm asking all of you, because it takes a lot of money-
We understand what you're saying, ma'am.
-to build what you have a vision for, and it doesn't make sense.
We have been through this many times. We understand what you're saying. We understand the difficulty. We understand the market. We understand the feasibility. We understand the profit motive. We understand all of that, okay?
So how can you help?
We are making a decision on two issues tonight. We're going to do that. If you want to come back and talk to staff, we'll talk to you later about what we might be able to do. Help, we'd be very happy to help you to come in with something besides what you have presented. That's my, my perspective, okay?
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. We have Plan Commission recommendation on both of these and staff recommendation. Our senior, our senior staff has waved in with the standards that we are using to make a decision tonight. Amy, Amy made a very articulate presentation of where we're coming from and what we're using to make the decision. And now it's time to make the vote. We have two items. We have one that already has a motion and a second. Any further discussion of that particular item? Okay, may I have a roll call, please?
Just for the purposes of reminding that the first motion was the motion on the plat of consolidation, to approve the plat.
Right.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Lockett?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Wilkie?
Aye.
Alderman Agustinovich?
Aye.
And Alderman Kruckenberg?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Would someone like to make the second motion? Alderman Lockett?
I'd like to make a motion to accept Plan Commission recommendation and direct the city attorney to draft an ordinance denying the special use permits for a gas station and drive-through for 28 West 846 Butterfield Road.
Second.
Second by Alderman Wilkie. Any further discussion of that issue? Thank you. Roll call, please.
Alderman Wilkie?
Aye.
Alderman Agustinovich?
Aye.
Alderman Kruckenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Lockett?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
And Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Motion carries. We are done this evening. Thank you for making your best effort. We appreciate that. And we'll find something for that.
And-
No hurry.
And just to be clear, the motion that passed, the motion that passed tonight was a motion to recommend the city attorney draft an ordinance that will be brought back at the net, at the next meeting.
Right. You could come back then if you like. All right. We have no need for a executive session. I said that last, how come I only got minutes for the last one? All right. Who wants to make the motion? Alderman Berry?
I'd like to make a motion to go into closed session for the purpose of five ILCS 120 slash 2, print C, print 6, the setting of a price for sale or lease of property owned by the public body. Second.
Motion and a second. Could I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Agustinovich?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Lockett?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Kruckenberg?
Aye.
And Alderman Wilkie?
Aye.
Motion carries. We are entering into executive session. We will not be conducting any business after that, so you're free to go about your personal business. Thank you for your attention this evening, and we'll see you again next Monday.